Turn the cameras off. I mean, it's on standby, but yeah.
Let us know.
Yep, you're good, so.
It is six thirty-three and I call the April ninth twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Franklin County Plan Commission to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss meeting format.
So tonight's meeting will be conducted through a hybrid in-person slash online meeting platform. Should an individual plan commissioner become unexpectedly disconnected, please rejoin the meeting at your first opportunity. The record will reflect your attendance. The meeting will be paused for up to ten minutes to address technical difficulties. If they can't be resolved within ten minutes, then the meeting will proceed so long as a quorum of plan commissions are present. Please mute phone when not speaking. If you wish to comment or need clarification on a public hearing item, please send us an email at plan inquiry at frank county wall dot gov. Before the public comment period closes, once public comment period is closed on said item, comments will not be included as part of discussion. To those in attendance, please remember to speak into the microphone when addressing staff or public comments slash testimonies.
Will planning staff please call roll and announce whether or not we have a quorum?
Mike Rallos.
Here.
Mike Vincent.
Here.
Mark DeRuter.
Here.
Manny Gutierrez.
I'm here.
Stacy Neiften.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Will staff in attendance please introduce yourselves?
For the record, um, we have two that aren't here. They need to, that needs to go on the record, so.
Okay.
Melinda Didier is absent and why am I drawing the blank?
I think that's just a vacancy.
Oh, no, yeah, that's just a vacancy, so we have one, yeah, okay. We'll get there.
Oh, you're still supposed to.
Oh, all right, so we're on the next part, yes?
Calling roll.
Yeah, who we are, all right, it's been a while, folks, sorry. I'm Derek Broton, I'm the Director of Planning and Building for Franklin County.
Ryan Nelson, Planner One.
Aaron Guderson, Planner Two.
We will now pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. Stand one nation under God in civil with liberty and justice for all. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Vincent, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting, good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
So here are the ground rules for tonight's hybrid meeting. In-person public testimony divided two groups for and against slash neutral. They'll be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, given their name for the audio record and position on the proposal. Webex public testimony be called upon individually during Webex public testimony portion of hearing, given their name for the audio record as well as if they're in favor, neutral, or against the proposal. Please mute audio when not speaking. Email comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the public Webex public testimony section of hearing. All questions, comments and questions shall be addressed to the plan commission and should be relevant to the application and not be of a personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers who are part of a group or organization, please elect a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks is prohibited. Every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Turning for a moment to our commission members, let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on the subject matter of these hearings except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a decision in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for hearing today. Whether we have had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interests in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matters, or whether we have any business associates or immediate family who may either be benefited or harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show there were no declarations. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any commission member hearing any of the items on this agenda? Let the record show there were no objections. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report, the commission may ask questions of staff. The applicant or applicant's representatives presentation, in-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Webex public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Final staff comments, clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Item one is a public hearing for file CUP twenty twenty-four dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-four dash three. Is a proposal to allow for building height deviation to the accessory structure standards in the suburban twenty RS twenty zoning district. I declare the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty-four dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-four dash three to be open at six forty. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. So as mentioned, this is a request for a deviation of height allowance with regards to a accessory storage, accessory building on a property along the shorelines, sort of. The, and you'll see what I mean by that in a minute. The address is twenty-seven oh four, Road sixty-four, Pasco, Washington on parcel number one-one-eight-five-five-one-one-three-oh. The zoning for the property is suburban twenty RS twenty. Comp plan is low doesn't see residential, which is actually a city of Pasco designation, we don't go that low generally. As far as our comp plan goes, approximately two-point-four acre property. West of Road sixty-four, north of Richardson Road, east of Road sixty-eight, southwest Argent. Okay, sorry. Request to exceed the maximum allowed building height for an accessory structure. The proposed structure is approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. Site plan featured site access, location of fam, single-family dwelling currently under construction, the location of a proposed accessory building, existing septic system, well, water supply line, and adjoining road. This is the subject area, that property, whoops. So it's a long. Then nowadays, this isn't necessarily permitted, we have to go through a process to allow for that type of lot. That's long and thin like that, but that's not relevant to the discussion, it's just an observation, sorry. It's like huh, haven't seen one of those in a while. These are site pictures, there's a picture of the pending land use action sign, we post those at the time of noticing. On or about March seventh, twenty twenty-four, staff sent notices, technical agencies, property owners within five hundred feet in the Franklin County graphic. We also posted land, pending land use action sign on March twenty-first. And a SEPA determination of non-significance was entered into SEPA registry as registry number two oh two four hundred nine six four. Agents of comments received or that an approach permit is required to access Franklin County roads. They probably already have an access since they're building the house, so that, that condition's been met. These are standard public comments regarding generally construction or these types of proposals. If there's a need to cut across the road for some reason, it'll be addressed at that time. Franklin County Planning and Building, building permits will be required, development standards of FCC seventeen point two eight point oh five oh will apply to the project. And the maximum lock coverage shall be forty percent, that's under structure. Fire code setbacks contain apply due to the, I'm sorry, contained in FCC eight point four oh oh four eight oh apply due to the lack of fire hydrants, fire suppression systems within five hundred feet of the property. What that means is instead of a ten-foot side setback, they have to maintain a twenty-foot side setback. The front and the backs are the same, it's twenty-five and twenty-five. Oh, wait, yeah, on a house is twenty-five, on an accessory structure it can be twenty, but it's still the same, twenty, twenty, twenty. The accessory structure set up shall be compatible, similar roofing siding materials, both type and color, and similar in relation to the primary home, so it's proposed to be greater than one thousand six hundred and eighty square foot. That's what we call the sixteen eighty rule. For whatever reason, at that dimension, they have to match. If it's less than that, then they just have to match color, not material. And Benton Franklin Health District has no issue with the height of the shop, however, it is noted on the plot plan that sewer is coming from the shop to the septic tank. So there will be limited to a sink and a toilet only, no shower in that building. Conditional use permit is to allow the construction and use of proposed accessory still building that would exceed the maximum allowed building height. They have proposed to build an accessory structure that is approximately twenty-four feet in height with a midpoint being approximately twenty feet. That's two foot over our minimum or maximum, which is eighteen feet as measured from the midpoint of the roof. However, our code does allow for the height to be exceeded upon the approval of condition, in this case it'd really be more of a special use permit. Which are special use and conditional use permits are interchangeable, same process is used and they're pretty much the same impact. Proposed use in the RS twenty zoning is in accordance with the goals policies of the county because they're going through this process. Assuming it, if it gets approved, then that makes it compliant with the rules because that's what our rules say. That if you go through that process and it's approved, then it's complying. The proposal will not adversely affect public infrastructure, it's already been, you know, that's a, there's already a house there, it's just a, a storage building on the property. It's not really adding to traffic or, or a likelihood of increased people being in the area because of the, the, the construction of this building. Proposal will be construct, maintain, and operate to be in harmony with the existing, again, it's got to match color and materials, so it's going to blend in just about everybody out there. It's very, it's almost getting rare to not find somebody with, with an, in an accessory storage building. The location, the height of the structure will not discourage the development or permit a use as unpermit, you know, we're talking a two-foot differential. And the reality is, is unless you've got a really good eye, you, you're not going to even tell. The elevation levels and things like that, I mean, a fifteen-foot building, depending on where it's sitting, could be actually higher in elevation than this building is because it's sitting up on a hill. You know, these types of things, so it should not interfere with anything. It's a shop, if we get noise complaints, then we'll deal with those at those times. However, in Franklin County, you can make noise between seven and ten P M. So after that, we'll have potentially an issue, it's for private use, it's not for a business, so there's, there should be no risk of those issues. And, you know, they will be limited unless they do something with the existing septic or they get approval from the health district, nothing more than a, a toilet and a sink in that building if they so desire. I don't even know if they're proposing to do that, but lots of folks do, lots of them clean up before they go in to the house or whatever. So in addition to standard CUP language, the applicant shall comply with the requirements from the following agencies, Franklin County Public Works, Benton County, or Benton Franklin Health District, and Franklin County Planning and Building. And I do have a proposed motion, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
What kind of a structure is it?
I'm assuming it's stick-built, but we don't know yet, have we seen the plans? So it's stick-built, yeah, it's a stick-built structure.
More questions? Does the applicant?
Wood trust system?
I guess, yeah, I mean, the reason, I, I guess I'm not, it's, that's how they're designing it in the specific structural design, or whether they're using steel, or wood, or adobe, isn't it really the, the purview of the, the question? The question is whether or not they can exceed the height regardless of what type of structure they're building.
It'll match the house, it's going to be stick frame, it's going to match just like the house, pretty much copy of the house.
Okay, so, well, I'll ask you to say that from up there in a minute.
Any more questions? Okay, does the applicant wish to speak?
Yeah, I'll answer his question.
Say your name and address.
I'm David Torres with A D T Construction, so I'm, I'm the general contractor. So, and it's going to be matching the house, everything, the windows, the stucco, the roof, even the, the framing, six inches on center, it's, it's pretty much a copy of the house. Cause it's, it's for storage for, so he wants to make sure that when he goes in there, it's going to even have drywall, so it'll be, it'll be a copy of the house. But it's, it's pretty much a big garage, is, is working room, kind of hide from the.
What's the pitch of the roof?
Uh, I can't remember the pitch, but it should be at least a five twelve, because there's a minimum. The house has a six twelve, so I'm sure we're going to match the house too. So the roof, everything's going to match the house.
Righty, thank you.
Deal.
Is there any public testimony for this project? Any against or neutral? Any call-in public testimony for, against, or neutral? Email public testimony? Does staff have any final comments?
Nope, it's pretty straightforward.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? Public testimony portion for the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty-four dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-four dash three is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion?
Manny, do you have any questions?
No question.
We'll entertain a motion.
And we have a suggested motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would move for CUP twenty twenty-four dash two slash SEPA twenty twenty-four dash oh three. Move that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for, for that, with six adopted findings of fact and eleven conditions of approval.
Second. Second. Been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Neiften that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP twenty twenty-four dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-four dash three, with six adopted findings of fact and eleven conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll, roll call vote, please.
Mike Rallos.
Yes.
Mike Vincent.
Yes.
Stacy Neiften.
Yes.
Mark DeRuter.
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been approved.
Item two is a public hearing for file CUP twenty twenty-four dash three, SEPA twenty twenty-four dash four. Is a proposal for the construction of an irrigation store on a parcel that has split zoning, agricultural production twenty, A P twenty, and general industrial I two, and a split comprehensive planned land use designation of agricultural and rural industrial. I declare the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty-four dash three, SEPA twenty twenty-four dash four to be open at six fifty-four. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair, as mentioned, this is a request to locate a irrigation store. We're not talking little, you know, Lowe's, go to Lowe's and get irrigation supplies, no, we're talking agricultural irrigation supplies. So it's, they're actually have been operating for quite a while in another location, it's a leased location. They acquired the property, it's almost, probably over a year ago. And they've been working to get it set up to where they can move to this new property. One of the issues which was mentioned, and I'll get into it in a little bit more detail, is it is what's known as a split property. The property has two different zoning designations and two different comprehensive plan designations. That is an oversight, it shouldn't ha, happen that way unless requested by the landowner generally, and I'm not aware of that request occurring. That said, the Ag twenty portion of the property requires a conditional use, whereas the north, the I two property doesn't, or the section of the property does not require a conditional use permit. Cause I two's pretty liberal in what's, what's allowed out there, that's industrial, rural industrial zone. So, one way or the other, eventually this will become one hundred percent, whether it's, you know, either I two or A P twenty, that'll be in discussion with the landowner at the time when we do our comprehensive plan as to which way he wants that shifted on his property. To where he, you know, so, however, he can't move forward with this facility without a conditional use permit on the Ag twenty partial. And the reason he wants to locate there is because it's just for better access, it's just the better part of the property for his needs. So, property is located at three-two-five-one Glade North Road on parcel number one-two-four-two-five-oh-oh-nine-one. And as mentioned, it's both agricultural production twenty on the south and general industrial, rural industrial to the north. Comp plan, agricultural to the south, rural industrial to the north. Property size is approximately four-point-zero-one acres. It's located on the south of Self Landing Road, west of Glade Road North, and north of Clark Road. Request is to reconstruct an irrigation supply store with possibility of constructing a shop at a later time for fabrication purposes, where they would actually fabricate the stuff that there's, the pipe and shape the pipe. Apken is here and he'll be able to tell you much more detail as to the specifics of his operation. The area to be used is eighty-one hundred square feet for the irrigation store and six thousand square feet for future fabrication shop. And the site. site plan features an irrigation store, or it shows it, irrigation store, outside pipe storage, wellhouse, parking for public service vehicles. Now, this is a subject property. So I would say, see, the, the dividing line runs at an angle across the property and it's kinda, it's just kinda weird. We will, like I said, clean that up in our, in our next update and get that fixed. These are site pictures. So this is where they would be laying out the pipe, the pipe yard, the actual store. This is the first phase. This will come along as their business grows or has a need for it. But at, but it's one of these, I often recommend to applicants on a conditional use permit of this nature, show what you're gonna do, because if, if it, they don't include this and we don't consider this now, if they choose to add it at a later date, then we'll have to go through another, an amendment to their existing proposal. So, but however, there's no requirement for them to move into those additional stage, cause it's, as market dictates. On or about March seventh, twenty twenty-four, staff sent notices to technical agencies, property owners within one mile in the Franklin County graphic, posted a pending land use action sign on the property on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and made a C F A determination of non-significance, entered a C F A registry number two oh two four hundred nine six five. Application is a request to construct an irrigation store along with a future fabrication. Close is approximation to the county code to an irrigation store and fabrication would be the classification of a contractor's yard and an agricultural supply facility. One thing, it just dawned on me, your staff reports have a different interpretation, which is equally valid. And that was, I think, a basically a machine yard or a, a sales lot, large machinery kinda thing. And I didn't catch that when it got sent out. So the, the reality in my interpretation, and I'm the director, so I get the final say on those, is that it's, it's more closely related to a contractor's yard, so it's that they're gonna be storing pipe and materials out in an open yard. They're gonna have service vehicles, they're gonna have various bits of equipment. But at the same time, their focus prime, you know, if not exclusively, definitely primarily on serving the agricultural community, which is a, another type of, you know, condition or, or preference for retail that opens out in the ag areas. It is the preference that they are there to serve the agricultural community. So this is not a facility that's supplying municipal sewer systems that I'm aware of. Maybe they'll expand into that at some point, but that's not their purpose now. Right there, you know, they provide irrigation, the big irrigation system, wheels and, and the things that make the pivots. God, I'm like seeing everything but the word. Okay, so both uses are classified as conditional uses in the A P twenty zones, whereas in the I two zone, they're classified as permitted uses. As mentioned, it's been split, it's got the split zoning and it's, the, where they wanna build is on the A P twenty portion. And as mentioned, it's split between two comprehensive planned land use, Nick, and we will get that taken care of in our update. Rural industrial contains multiple policies centered on the encouragement of rural industrial businesses along with agricultural-related industries and activities. There is a provision in rural land characteristics section providing for industrial and commercial development within rural land, providing they do not require urban services and are compatible with densities and land uses of the rural areas and natural environment. This meets both of those in spades. I mean, again, this has already been permitted up north, they're changing location. So it's not like it's a new thing to the area, just that specific location. Franklin County Public Works, are their standard C U P comments, approach permit will be required. And then any utility extension crossing Franklin County roads will be addressed at the time of application. Washington Department of Ecology submitted standard agency comments on March twenty twenty twenty-four, and those are generally, if you're doing this, then you need to do that. If you're doing this, it's a list of stuff, you know. So it's, they're generally generic about ninety percent of the time from ecology. Before construction of irrigation store and fabrication, they'll need to get a building permit. The proposed irrigation store and fabrication shop shall comply with the standards of the currently adopted building code. We're mentioning this, cause we, on March fifteenth, we transitioned from the twenty eighteen code to the twenty twenty-one code. So the building code now has been ratcheted up as well as the energy code for Washington State. We don't have any say on that. It's mandated and handed down by the state. Setback for structure on the property will need to comply with F C C chapter eight point four oh, basically because there's no fire suppression. Or they'll, they'll need to put, if they put in fire suppression, then they can do, you know, closer setbacks. If they don't, they'll have to maintain the rural fire setbacks of twenty foot on the side, fifteen foot separation between structures and twenty-five foot to the rear and the front. Proposal is in accordance with the goals and policies of the county development regulations and the applicable comprehensive plan. Proposal will not adversely affect public infrastructure. Will be constructed, maintained, and operated to be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, location and height of the structure and site design. Discourage the development of permitted uses in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. The operation in connection with the proposal will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise fumes. In fact, frankly, this type of activity is probably gonna produce less of those types of things than, say, your average farming activity. And it will not endanger the health, safety, or general welfare if located where, where proposed. It's, it's been, again, that particular, this site for him to locate there is actually the harder. If he had located to the north, he wouldn't have to go through all this, it would just be permitted by right. But he chose to locate there for a variety of reasons. One is the fact that that's, that's just a better and safer access point where the, the property interacts with the transportation system. In addition to standard C U P language, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of following agencies, Franklin County Public Works, Washington State Department of Ecology, Franklin County Planning and Building. And I'm gonna just give you guys ahead, it's pretty much what we're gonna be getting for the next one too. So happy to answer any questions, and I do have a suggested motion if you desire.
I have a quick question, Derek, on this.
Yep.
So can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. So the, you mentioned that the property is split between two comprehensive planned land use designations for this primitive use. And I think you may have answered this, but I wasn't clear on it. Is there anything in the comprehensive plan as far as policies on rural land uses for retail industrial business like such for Mr. Bowman?
In the comprehensive plan itself, yes, it's, it's, it, there's various locations throughout the comprehensive plan that speaks to encouraging economic development in the rural areas, as long as those uses are, are relevant or compatible. So the fact that this, I mean, even if this was, say, a full-blown facility where they were manufacturing agricultural stuff, like, I don't know, parts or something for some other, I don't, I don't know, silos. That's the type of, if we're gonna have industrial or large-scale commercial activity, that's the type of stuff that we prefer to locate out in these areas because it's, it's a direct service to the agricultural community. Did that answer your question?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, it does. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood when you mentioned that the property is split between two comprehensive plans, land use designations for this primitive use of this, of this type of retail business. So, yeah, okay, thank you very much. That answers my question.
Yep.
Any more questions? Does the applicant wish to speak? No. Is there any in-person public testimony for the project? Neutral or against? No. Is there any call-in public testimony of any kind? Is there any email public testimony? Staff have any final comments?
Nope.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? The public testimony portion for the public hearing for C U P twenty twenty-four dash three, C F A twenty twenty-four dash four is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
That the Franklin County Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, six suggested findings of fact and thirteen suggested condition. As detailed in the staff report and approved case file C U P twenty twenty-four dash oh three, S E P A twenty twenty-four dash zero four.
I will second.
Been moved by Commissioner Knighton and seconded by Commissioner Gutierrez that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for C U P twenty twenty-four dash three, C F A twenty twenty-four dash four with six adopted findings of fact and thirteen conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? None, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Kraus?
Yes.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Stacy Knighton?
Yes.
Mark DeRuter?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been approved.
Thank you. Item three is a public hearing for file C U P twenty twenty-four dash four, C F A twenty twenty-four dash five is a proposal to allow for the construction of a new single-family dwelling unit and for the conversion of the existing single-family dwelling unit that is under sixteen hundred square feet to be used as a detached accessory dwelling unit. This land use action is allowed upon approval of a C U P as provided in F C C seventeen point six six point zero six zero J. The D A D U will be used for the care of aged parents who currently reside in the existing home. I declare the public hearing for C U P twenty twenty-four dash four, C F A twenty twenty-four dash five to be open at seven eleven. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This is a request, there is an existing house. They are desiring to build a new home on the property and then maintain the existing less than sixteen hundred square foot home. Keep that there. Well, in order to have two residential, detached residential units on a property, you are required to obtain a conditional use permit. Generally, the way it goes is most often what we have are requests to add a new D A D U to the property. However, there is nothing that prohibits a person from converting an existing residence as long as it's less than sixteen hundred square foot in size and designating that as their D A D U and then building. Well, there's one thing that could prohibit it, and that's they don't obtain approval. The, but the, there's no, they're perfectly eligible to request that an existing structure be designated as the D A D U and then the new house, which is bigger, to become the primary use on the property. D A D U's accessory or even attached accessories. So they're accessory to a primary use. All properties have one primary use, whatever it's being used for, there is one. That's the first. Most of the time in our cases, a lot, you know, it's residences. That's, so the primary use is a residential use. However, on a farm, you know, like an actual crop circ property, the primary use is agriculture. You know, and then the accessory use of building, storage buildings is an accessory to the farm, meaning that if not but for the farm, the storage building would be useless. There's no accessory use, it's, it's connected to it. D A D U, same thing. You got your primary residence, and then the secondary is an accessory to that. It's, you know, so what all that means is that under certain circumstances, folks have the ability to do this. We'll get into those things in a little bit. Some of you have heard it before already, but we'll, we'll get into it, because this is not our first D A D U. It is unusual that normally they're flipped, where the new construction is going to be the D A D U or bringing in a manufactured home or something like that. So the address is one four oh Radar Hill Road, Othello, Washington. Parcel number is one two oh oh four oh five four four. The zoning is rural residential, R R five. It's one of the few lammers we have up in that area of the county, where the minimum lot size is five acres. Most of that area up there is just A P twenty and a lot of dairy and, and other activities up there, but, or grazing and stuff. Comp plan designation is rural remote, which is generally the designation for most of our, there are a lot of, most of our lammers that are out, out there like that. And the property size is approximately five acres. It is generally located south of State Route twenty-four, west of Radar Hill Road, southwest of Mail Road, southeast of Sage Hill Road, and approximately four hundred and fifty feet south of the Franklin Adams County line. So it's up there. To allow, you know, again, it allows, the request is to allow for the conversion of an existing residence to be classified as a D A D U after completion of their new residence on the property. The existing single-family dwelling. So that's what we're talking about is if we designate that as the D A D U, it just, that's what the purpose of this hearing is, is to change its status effectively from the primary use on the property to a detached accessory dwelling unit designation. The fight pla- ah, fight plan, site plan features site access, location of existing single-family dwelling, location of proposed new single-family dwelling, existing septic system, well, water supply line, and the adjoining road. This is the property. Yeah, it's one of them long skinnies, but we don't, we don't get too into that out in the blocks, but. These are site pictures. The blue structure is the existing home, I'm assuming. Okay, now I'm confused, cause now it's brown. Or is that just shadow?
The first set was the accessories photos, the second says the site pictures.
Oh, okay, alright. I like the boat, too. So this is, you know, they've got each of the buildings, is it a rough, you know, their site plan? They've already got an existing driveway and, and things like that. As mentioned, it's a request for a new home to be built on the property and the existing home to be converted to a detached accessory dwelling unit. So that the property owner can take care of an aged relative who is currently living in the house, being considered in this application. And the, as mentioned, it's less than sixteen hundred square feet in size, which means it meets the requirements to be designated as a D A D U, cause that's really about the only requirement. because that's really about the only requirement. Um, well, that's not true. It can't be smaller than seven hundred and twenty square foot, but. So, um, one DADU is permitted if the parcel is two acres or larger, which this one is. Um, and it shall not exceed one thousand six hundred square feet. And the exterior colors of the accessory dwelling must be compatible with the primary dwelling. Earlier I was talking about the sixteen eighty rule, right? The sixteen eighty rule does apply here, but it's not. Does it apply in our, ours?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So this is out of the, okay, I caught up. When you're, we, we have aesthetic requirements with regard to DADUs or things on the property trying to be making a match, you know, and not really like glaringly stand, stand out, so. The DADUs may be permitted through a CUP to care for aged relatives. On or about March seventh, twenty twenty-four, staff sent notices technical agencies, property owners within one mile in Franklin County Graphic. They posted a land, pending land use action sign on the property on March twenty-first and made a SEPA determination of non-significant and entered that into the SEPA registry as number two oh two four hundred nine six six. Franklin County Public Works, same, same comments. Um, approach permit will be required. They already have one. However, they will need to apply for another one just so that the public works department can go out and make sure that that existing access meets current standards or required standards. Um, and then any utility extension crossing Franklin County roads. There is no charge for that, by the way. We don't charge for access permits. Um, it's just they gotta go over to Public Works, fill out some paperwork, sign it, and then, um, also what happens in that process is that's when their new house will be assigned an address. There's already a recommended address assigned, but that's when it becomes official. Um, see, again, standard comments from, um, Department of Ecology. And our comments are that they need, get a new, a building permit, um, for the new home. Any modifications to the existing structure being converted to a DADU shall comply with the standards of the currently adopted building code. So right now they don't have to really do anything with the existing DADU. But if they were, were choose to modify it in some way or, or, um, go in there and start making structural modification or changes, those will have to be, um, you know, they put in a new HVAC system or something like that. Those types of things will have to meet the twenty twenty-one code, not the code in place at the time the building was built. Shall not be used for um, any other purpose than as approved through this permit. It shall only be occupied by family or permanent hired help. The application will need to follow the provisions of the Franklin County Code, seven point six six point oh six oh. Accessory dwelling units detached. The proposed use in the RR five zoning district is in accordance with the goals and policies of the County Development Regulations and the applicable comprehensive plan will not adversely affect public infrastructure. Will be construction maintained and operated to be in harmony in existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Location and height of the structure and site design will not discourage development of permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. It will not be more objectionable nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes. It's already an existing residence. They'll put in a second residence and it'll just be two residences. Um, the proposal will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare if located where proposed. They will have to meet the same standards, um, any other person building on a property would. And again, this is an existing place with a functioning well and septic already. In addition to standard CUP language, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of the following agencies, Franklin County Public Works, Washington Department of Ecology, and Franklin County Planning and Building Department. So there's an existing well and there's an existing septic for this house. The new house, um, they, they will either need to drill a new well on the property, but the most likely scenario is they will convert it to a Class B, assuming it has appropriate flow. Class B allows for that single exempt well to serve two residences. Um, the septic, same thing. It's unlikely that the existing septic was designed to accommodate another house. So they will have to install a septic system. They'll have to go through the Benton Franklin Health District Approval Process. Um, some of those things may have already been done, but I'm just saying if, if that's the situation. So happy to answer any questions and I do have a suggestion motion when we get to that.
I got a question. I got two questions.
Yep.
The, uh, my second question is the sixteen, is it sixteen eighty rule?
Yes.
That only applies if the, uh, accessory dwelling unit is more than sixteen hundred feet, right? Sixteen eighty?
No, it's, it applies to any accessory structure whether, so it would, okay.
More than sixteen eighty, it has to comply with exterior finishes, right?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
If it's sixteen eighty or larger.
Right.
It has to match color and materials for the roof and the siding.
Yeah, it says it's less than sixteen eighty. It doesn't have to meet that requirement.
But it does have to match color.
Match color, okay. So when this, uh, with this proposal right here, is there one billing permit for this whole project, right? Because you're gonna have a new primary structure.
Yeah, the, the reality is what we're doing is converting or flipping things. So you have an existing stuff or existing house that meets the requirements of a DADU. The new proposed house does not. It's too big, I'm assuming. Um, so that one, so what we're doing is by converting and designating that, there'll be conditions that it lay out that basically say when the occupancy of the new house is confirmed, they get their CO.
Right.
At that point is when the actual transition will occur. So.
That kicks in then, right?
That's when now you are a DADU and the new house is the primary use. So up until that point, there will be a single house and then there'll be construction on the property. However, they cannot proceed with that construction unless this designation change occurs or they level the existing house.
Till you have an occupant of the house, then you move forward with the DADU as far as that part of it. The acceptance of the, of the future DADU as a DADU doesn't happen until.
The existing, the, the existing house is being converted to a DADU.
Yeah, I just said, so when the new house goes up.
Uh huh.
CO is, is acquired.
That's for the, the new house.
New house. And that's when you look to the D, the.
That's when it's, it's status changes.
Into the DADU.
That's when it technically changes, yeah.
And you're saying that that has to be compliant to twenty-one energy codes?
The new house does, not the old, yeah.
Is there anything that would have to be done to the, the now DADU?
The existing house?
Existing house, yeah.
No.
Nothing.
It's already occupied. That's where the family member already lives there.
You're just saying if there was any kind of improvements or anything was done to it.
Correct.
So you're, it would be working off of the, the primary permit at that point.
No, it would be a separate permit.
It'd be a separate permit taken out?
Yes, yes. Any modifications made to either structure would be separate permits, um, because they're separate structures.
Okay, so this sets since we got the new house, existing, uh, house becomes a DADU. Then in the future, if they decide to do anything with the now DADU, it has to be permitted and comply with twenty-one energy code.
Yeah, or whatever codes are in place at that time. Yeah. Yeah, right now we are now, as of March fifteenth, we are under the twenty twenty-one Washington Building Code and the twenty twenty-one Washington State Energy Code. They finally let us know on the fourteenth. So we had one day's notice that they, when they finally adopted it.
So what's that like?
You know, I have to talk to my building official. It's, it, it adds costs. Um, triple pay is pretty much standard now.
More energy credits.
Yeah, because double pay ain't going to get you where you need to go.
Yeah, okay.
That's, you know.
Yeah, that's another.
A little bit of a sore subject for some folks. I'm, I'm not a fan considering the fact that we're having a housing crisis. That the state keeps jacking up the prices of housing. So.
Yeah.
Um, but we're here to do what we need to do.
All righty. Well, thank you, Derek.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions? Does the applicant wish to speak? Okay. Is there any in-public testimony at all? Is there any call-in testimony? Any email testimony?
Nope.
Does staff have any final comments?
No.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? Public testimony portion of public hearing, of the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty-four-4, SEPA twenty twenty-four-5 is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll go.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, it's, oh, it's right there. I'm sorry.
Um. At the bottom of the page.
Oh. I motion.
It's up there now.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. I moved Franklin County Planning Commission move forward a positive recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and adopt six of the suggested findings of fact and thirteen suggested conditions of approval as detailed in the staff report and approved case file CUP twenty twenty-four-4, SEPA twenty twenty-four-5.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner DeRuder and seconded by Commissioner Knighton, that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP twenty twenty-four-4, SEPA twenty twenty-four-5 with six adopted findings of fact and thirteen conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Crowley?
Yes.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Stacy Knighton?
Yes.
Mark DeRuder?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been approved.
Okay. Close the public portion of the meeting? Okay, so we'll just keep it public. Discussion amongst planning commission regarding topics to cover more in depth for the future Title XV workshop. Is there any discussion among planning commission or do you need to tell us something?
Well, back in the day I had questions, but at this point what I need to do is reiterate that we are trying to work on the update, what we call the heavy lift aspect of the, um, zoning code, bringing it up. The last time it was updated really from beginning to end was in oh eight. So we are, um, moving it. We're, we're pretty close. But what I need from the planning commission is if they have any questions or specific areas. So we, one, I need to know who needs a new copy of the changes so that we can get those out to you and we'll get those out to you like tomorrow.
We got that a long time ago.
We did, yeah. Um, so, um, then the, because we have, our consultants are on hold waiting for me to give them direction for when they come in, but I wanted, I was looking for some guidance from the planning commission as to whether or not there are specific elements or items that they, they have curiosity on or like to see changed. Um, otherwise, if not, then we will go through the standard process in way that, you know, we do things and we'll go, and we'll go, well, these are the things, the big, the big things. Some of you, quite a few of you have already sat through a, an initial summary presentation of the changes and things like that. Because it's been so long and, um, we've got some new members, I would like to bring our consultants back, have them do that again and then have a discussion and then start moving this thing, um, starting to hold public workshops where we invite the public to participate. Those are going to require additional meetings during the month. Um, because they will be dedicated just to that subject. And we will have the public come in, some, you know, to hear from them and to explain what we're doing. Because what we're doing is we're just catching the county up in effect and making some, basically, you know, I've heard complaints about certain policies or practices or zoning requirements for the five years I've been here, five plus. So some of those are going to be recommended with changes. Um, one of them, for example, is the, um, the height thing, eighteen foot from the midpoint of a roof. I'm not clear why that particular measurement methodology was adopted. Um, I'm not sure about some of the other things with regard to the size limitations on people's storage buildings where it becomes tied into the square footage of their home. So for example, you have a two thousand square foot home, then you can only have a two thousand square foot. Yeah, in that case you could have a two thousand square foot shop or accessory structure. Because the equation is half the square footage of the residence plus one thousand is your maximum allowed. So if you have a big house, you can have a big shop. But if you have a little house, you can't have a big shop. And I'm not clear, you know, so these types of things are the things that I will be in this near, in this thing. Then we're going to come back again over the course of, depending on how long it takes us, so we'll say beginning or middle of twenty-five and we're going to start going in with a scalpel and looking at very minute things that will come out in the process of us doing this heavy lift. So we'll find that, okay, we need to tweak that thing right there. Okay, we need to tweak that. And we'll get those things. We'll adopt what we got. We'll deal with those tweaks, fine tune it some more, more workshops. At that point, we will probably also have a zoning committee group or something like that to where we invite the public and we form, there's, there's talk at the board level where they want to put together a zoning committee that kind of looks at our zoning code. Um, and that's where, um, that would be coming in to where we'd start tweaking the system to really be Franklin County Code based on the specific dynamics and paradigms that exist in our county and our needs. We've got a lot of stuff that's collaborative and if you look, it seems very similar to the city of, um, Pasco's regulations. Some of those things, maybe we don't need to worry about. Um, and maybe we need to get rid of those, you know, these types of things because we're a rural community and we have some, but another thing that we have to look at is our code is designed as if we're a rural community and that we don't have anything called suburbia. Well, we do now. And that's a whole area that needs to be addressed and our codes just really are lacking in, in doing those types of things. So, um, so this zoning code, I want, I want to bring it back next month. And then I would, I really need feedback as to how you guys want to proceed with this because it's about education. It's like I said before, this should not move out of this room or this group until you all are comfortable and able to say with a, a good conscience, yes, I support what this is. You could get outvoted if you don't, but that, the point being is, is, is I really need, because you folks are the ones that will be assisting us in the enforcement. Are we doing our jobs right? And the best way, one of the best ways to, to know what we're supposed to be doing. And the best way, one of the best ways to, to know what we're supposed to be doing is to go through this fun process we're about to launch into. But it's also your opportunity to help make it what you think this county should be looking like. Of course, anything we put together will merely be a recommendation that will be forwarded onto the board. However, what you guys say has significant influence on what the board thinks. So, um, we'll get those out. I think what we'll do is we'll send out electronic copies just to everybody, just so we know that everybody's got it. If you need paper copies, reply to that email and let us know. I need a paper copy and then we'll mail you one. Or you can come by and pick it up. However, however, we make those arrangements.
Okay.
That's all Title XV stuff is what you're referring to, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know what anybody else is thinking, but I'm not going to find specific things. I'd like them to come through. I don't know how long this is going to take. I don't know if you need a meeting every month or two every month. Let's just say, okay, today's section four, two, and eight, whatever you guys want to break it up through. Do the expedited portion. If we know we're going to be looking at those portions, if we know ahead of time, we can scan them and then we'll have some ideas. Instead of telling you, we want to look at this or that.
Okay.
I, I don't, I need to just get a brief discussion on everything.
So break it into, what I'll do is I'll break it, and I've got some ideas of that. And that's the way it's kind of going to be moving anyways.
How many meetings would it take to do the whole thing?
It depends. It depends. See, like, some sections are going to be like one section.
For a meeting.
For a meeting. Other ones, we can like three or four, five, six, maybe.
So is this ten days or five days?
I, I, it, it, I can't give you an answer on that because it's going to be a fluid thing. If we ramor out it through, we could do it in six meetings. But that's not really a good quality product.
Well, but we have to set a pace or we're going to drag on.
No, I know that. And I will, I will bring a.
Anybody else have a different idea about that?
If, if this is the, and I have no qualms with this. What I will do is at the next meeting, I will bring back a projected timeline. I have to coordinate with our consultant. They've done gobs of work and they've just been sitting on this for years, frankly, uh, waiting for us to be able to get to where we're moving on it. Um, so I, um, I will coordinate with them at the next meeting. I will bring you a rough idea of how we're going to break it out then.
So we're not going to set a meeting, a workshop meeting yet? It's still a month or two away?
You talking about?
Them coming here and talking us through this whole thing. When will that start?
That's what I'm saying. We can, I will have them here next month, assuming they're available, um, to do that presentation.
The quickie thing.
The summary like you guys already, some of you already sat through. And then in that meeting, you will also be informed of this is what our game plan is. And this is our timeline approach and things like that. Because we've got things together, but they're all out of whack now. We've been down for four months. Everything's out of whack. So we've got to go back and look at things and how we're going to approach it.
If we have, have an idea of what we're going to review for that particular meeting, you know, then we can.
That's what I mean.
Punch this thing out.
I will, that's what I mean. I, I will, I will, I will get together with them. We'll figure out this breakdown. And then at each meeting, you will be, okay, next month, we're going to be talking about this guy. Next month, that one.
Just set a schedule and we just.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Derek, you mentioned them. Um, I'm assuming you are pertaining towards the consultants, right?
Yes.
And, and my question is if we did break this down into phases, there is, uh, uh, you know, few newer members, um, I should say, new commissioners um, in the planning commission that I feel would benefit from, one, breaking this down, um, into phases and having the consultant be able to answer and help us through some of the interpretation of some of these, um, summaries or some of these words that we may not understand.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what the proposal would be. Like I said, I don't control or know their schedule, so I have to work with them to determine when they're going to be available. They may not be, you know, I, I have the flexibility because, well, this is my job and I have to make sure that I'm here. They have other things and it may be a schedule conflict. That said, I don't need the consultants necessarily to interpret for us. I, I know what the language is and what the changes are. Where their participation will be is primarily with, just so that they're aware of where we're at and what we're saying.
Well, you may, second, I understand definitely, and I don't oppose that you know the language, but I'm talking about more for the newer members.
We will, we will take care of it. Yeah, Dave.
I think it'd be helpful for everybody.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I don't think it's.
I guess I'm not following something here because if you ask me what a word means or what something means, I tell you what that thing is.
Pretty much getting the plan for laying it out and getting it done.
That's what we just discussed.
Yeah.
That's what I said. I will bring that in next month. We will have, but I cannot speak for the consultants right now because they're not here. And they have a schedule that I have to coordinate with. And I, the best I can give you right now is I will tell you what we're doing at the next meeting. I can't tell you right now because I don't know yet until the, um, until I know what their availability is. That said, I don't need the consultants here to necessarily do workshops. So it will depend on the subject and what the specific item is as to whether or not, because also I have to pay for my consultants. So it's not, I don't, you know, so.
Derek, I want to ask you.
Those will be, those will be covered.
Are you, are we able to cover some of these problematic areas like you were saying? Say, size of accessory buildings?
Yes.
Uh, the, you know, ridge height of that type of thing. Can we kind of touch on some of that so we're not kind of, you know, uh, blind walking into the thing too? Get an idea of what is more problematic. And it could be considered, you know, like somebody's, this DADU thing is, is, uh, interesting, you know, concept, and we've been doing those. But I kind of wanted to, you know, dig into that. And obviously, there's going to be more areas of concern that you described uh, as opposed to in other areas that are going to be just, yeah, let's just push that through.
Yeah, so that's another subject, which is training workshops. Aaron's been looking into some things and, and yeah, we need to start holding workshops, you know, and this may have been what, you know, where we're bringing you guys up. These are the new changes. This is what this is. This is how this process works. This is best practices with regard to these and that. I don't know what training y'all have had, but over the years, it doesn't seem like anybody really did dedicated, like, this is how all this process works. You were more of a citizen committee that were, you know, and staff would explain things and, and stuff like that. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes, and, and it's partially how it needs to be. We need, we are a part-time, non-paid group. We cannot go to college and learn all this.
You're exactly right.
We have to get this explained to us on a by-case basis and be led through the process.
Right. I'm not, you know, but I'm just saying.
But we still are going to be, maintain our autonomy.
The, of course.
I mean, that's what you always express.
Uh, for example, case in point, the DADUs. Often we get asked, you know, well, what happens if they sell it, the house? And the rules are that they either, that unit is either occupied by the new owner's family or permitted hired help, or they, they level the building. That's what happens. You know, or they subdivide the property because they arrange it just right so that they can do that. But that's pretty rare. Some of the large lot ones though, no, it's totally feasible. Um, you know, like on a forty acre place that's got two units on it. If they haven't, or I mean, a sixty acre property that's got like two, two units on it and they have never subdivided it before, it's theoretically, they could pop those off individually. But that, again, it says that in the DADU code, that you can't sell them unless you subdivide it. You can't subdivide it unless it meets medical requirements. But it's these things, um, and not that specifically, but I'm saying there, we may be asking for, well, we, we will be asking for you guys to participate in trainings and workshop that we put together. But we will also try to make them as convenient for your attendance as possible. What ends up happening is we either run long meetings or we run more short meetings. And that may be something that you guys will need to feel or experience to really know which route you want to go, which is your preference. Would you rather get together for a little bit? Because I've noticed that about nine o'clock, man, things just start going sideways. We all get a little punch drunk at that point. But, so that's stuff, I mean, we, we haven't talked really since 2023 um, as a group, and we're still missing a couple of people. But we will have them. They will be at the next meeting. Um, the, the, or we have a new con out position hopefully will be filled on the seventeenth, which means that that party will be here as well. And then, so you'll all get the information at the same time, the timelines and all that stuff. But yeah, I really want to start pushing this. We're about, like I said, three, four months behind. But as you stated, we do it in breaking it up, and that's always been the plan, is to break it up in small pieces. What I was looking for was in case there were particular things that the planning commissioners saw or wanted to see and whether or not that was in there or not, and whether they want to have discussion about it. This approach is, is, is fine. We will do that. And that's, that, that's easier for us in some ways because we just break it down and then we go. There'll be some formatting rearrangements of stuff in the stu, in the code too, to make it easier for, for folks to use. It's pretty wonky the way it's written right now. And we've got to rearrange some stuff and do a lot. But like I said, HBL's done an amazing job on it. And basically, um, they've been working on it for quite a while. They had it really kind of ready to go around eighteen or nineteen, but we just weren't ready for it yet. We had other things that we had to get done. So now we're moving that through. And that's just really to catch up to where they are. Then we'll come back and there's been changes or, or things that have occurred, like we haven't even addressed the state's ADU, DADU rules that where we have options that we didn't used to have. Do we want to implement those in Franklin County? You know, these types of things. So. But that's more in the second phase, the fine tuning phase.
There's a lot to this, this DADU thing, right? It's locked down.
Yeah, the state, the state has, uh, for cities especially, right now, if you're a city, if you allow single-family homes, you must allow duplex and you must allow triplex.
So that law went through then?
As far as, that's my understanding. Aaron's actually been more up on it than I have.
So, so yeah, in the cities they have, and then. And then over in the counties, we are kind of under that because it has to do with the urban growth areas. So, um, so there, yeah, we'll have to do some changes by about 2026 or so in order to allow for, um, accessory dwellings by right. As far as like detached and things of that nature. And then two, then it gets also complicated too because technically through Commerce's AD, ADU guidance, you know, lammers or limited areas, more intensive rural development also are kind of fall into that urban growth kind of dichotomy there. So a lot of their.
Don't get me.
Yeah, I know.
Don't get me started on the schizophrenia of the state regarding lammers.
Yeah, so, so according to guidance, they kind of classify it kind of also as kind of an urban growth area in a sense that some of those ADU stuff would kind of, or at least as far as their guidance is, I don't, you know, it, yeah, like I said, yeah, yeah. The, the, the Lambert guidance is a little bit kind of schizophrenic from the state, but.
So, you know, and we have ideas too, um, of potentially, you know, looking at, okay, you have X number of units, but why do I have to make the guy build a, four separate units? Could he build a triplex as long as it's not larger than a certain footprint? There, there's a lot of different options and those are the things that we'll be looking at. And that's why we don't want to get too into the weeds on these things, these types of things at this stage, because we just got to get our stuff up kind of 2020 standards. And then we will, um, fine tune, go through these processes. Okay, DADUs, what does that look like in Franklin County? What do we want to see? But those are more laser focused, more scalpel approaches to where we're really getting into the weeds. And that'll be more, um, the beginning or mid 2025.
So triplex by the book is a bunch of small little ADUs? Is that what you're saying, DADUs?
No, no, triplex, meaning three units at forty-five hundred square foot, for example. Each unit not to exceed fifteen hundred square foot, which is a two-bedroom, three-bedroom bath house. And then you do a stack garage. So now you got parking underneath. It's basically a model that, the style that they build on the East Coast all day long. And I'm just saying that's, you know, there's potentialities. I'm not saying that that's the recommendation or anything like that, but we've been kind of single focused on how we look at development. And we want to look at potentially broadening some of those opportunities and ideas that are out there.
We don't develop like that. I mean, that's in the city and this is a different situation. I mean, as far as, you know, I mean, most of the developments we do are half acre, one acre type of stuff.
You can't build a triplex or a duplex in Franklin County right now.
Right.
So.
Really?
Yeah. You can in the cities. But there's nothing that allows that in Franklin County code. See, that's what I'm saying, these types of things. You want to build a house in Franklin County, it will be a single-family home. That's it.
Even in.
Except for in the C twos where you can apply for a multi-family permit.
What about the lammers?
No.
No.
Single-family home. And then you can do DADUs if you happen to have property over two acres. Everybody is permitted by right a attached accessory structure, providing it does not exceed eight hundred and.
It's eight hundred square feet.
It's eight hundred flat, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, again, you pull a two-bedroom, one-bath out of that generally. But.
Have you looked at any shops with a apartment like?
Bonnabinians, yep. Those we consider residences. Unless it's the second structure on the property, then it becomes a DADU. But you, there's no requirement, as long as your square footage of residential space is seven hundred and twenty or more. I don't have the requirement that your house is bigger than your garage. That's a city standard, not ours.
Okay, let's move on to other business. Discussion regarding the planning commission bylaws to start the meeting at six P M. Year round instead of six thirty, October through April and seven P M, May through September. Is there any discussion?
I like it.
Yeah, me too.
I like it too.
Keeps everything from getting.
Manny? Go there.
Yeah, I'm here. You hear me?
What do you think about a six o'clock meeting time from now on year round?
I think a six o'clock is good.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great.
That's it for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mike Corales?
Yes.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Stacy Neiften?
Yes.
Mark Deruter?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, the motion to move the meeting times to six P M has been approved.
So staff will prepare and modify the, the, uh, bylaws, bring those in. You'll need to sign them with the change and then we'll bring those at the next meeting. We'll have this, you know, you'll sign off on it and then that's when it will become official. So the next meeting will be at six thirty because.
Seven P M.
Seven P M? Okay, because notices have already gone out and things like that. Um, so the first six o'clock meeting would be June, June meeting. Okay.
Okay. All right. Nobody in the audience for a comment?
Nobody on the phone or anything, Aaron?
Preview of coming things.
I kind of went into that just a second ago. Those are our big focus. We've got some applications coming next month, and then the items from last month haven't really been processed to the board yet, but those will be going shortly.
Update on Planning Commission members. We see we have one, and there's another one that may be approved at this next week's Commissioners' meeting.
Correct. So hopefully, as of the 17th noon, we will have seven Commissioners again.
Full board.
That's it from me, unless y'all have questions or anything.
Okay. So meeting is adjourned at 7:58.
All righty.